First off, I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening to be part of our meeting. The first order of business, we need to make a formal resolution to accept the previous resignation of trustee Gregory Varian, who resigned his office on Friday, March 16th, due to personal reasons. We did issue...
We can't hear you.
Okay. Greg Varian, a prior member of the Board of Trustees, resigned his position from the library board on March 16th, due to personal reasons. I'm going to make a formal motion to accept the resignation of trustee Varian, whose term of office was due to expire on June 30th, 2019. It will now be part of the election coming up in May. So, I'd like to make a motion to accept the March 16th resignation of trustee Gregory Varian. Could I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Because of the short distance to the election, we will not be appointing a member to serve the interim period of time. I do want to thank, on behalf of the Board, trustee Varian for his years of service. He originally joined the library board in July 2006, so I think 12-plus years of service to the library board, and so we thank Greg for his service.
He's been amazing.
There he is, waving. Thank you, Greg. So, we'll move on to the next order of business, which is an update on the downtown redevelopment. So, I'm going to kick things off. So, as I sort of mentioned previously, we're very thankful to have the robust community involvement that we have, which is witnessed by the number of people in the auditorium tonight, who take such an active interest in the library's future. The Board is very aware that there is a high degree of concern in the community about the future of the library. To address those concerns, we, the Board, issued a statement a couple of weeks ago, I think it was on the 28th of March, which I'll read momentarily, I'll read it in full. And we also have copies of the statement here, available for anybody that wants to pick them up. Where are those copies, folks want them?
Our staff member back there has them.
Okay.
We'll make them available once you finish your remarks.
Okay, perfect, perfect. But before I read the statement, and the statement's also available on the website, before I read the statement, I did want to sort of go through a few highlights of the statement for the audience assembled here today, and the audience watching on the video. So, first item, and this is in the effort to sort of correct, I think, some misunderstandings that may be out there. Number one, the independence of the library board. So, the library and its Board of Trustees are an independent entity, and the actions the Board takes are not affected directly or indirectly by any other governing body, including the city of New Rochelle. We are an independent entity. In that vein, I want to make clear that any plans, architectural renderings, or models of the downtown distributed previously by the city or other parties, have not been approved by the Board, nor was the Board consulted in the preparation of those materials. So, again, the Board is an independent entity, and we make our own decisions on all matters, including the downtown redevelopment. Second topic I wanted to cover is the fiduciary duty of the members of the library board. As elected or appointed members of the Board, we take an oath, and those of you that have been meetings with trustees, have been sworn in, you've heard that oath, we take an oath under New York state law to act in the best interest of the library and its patrons, in line with the strategic plan of the library previously approved by the Board. To be very clear, our duty is to the library and no other entity. Next point I want to clarify, ownership of the library. The library will always own the space it occupies. The Board will not entertain a situation where the library is a renter or a lessor of property owned by another entity. I want to be very clear on that, because I think that's an item that has been misstated in certain forms. The fourth item I want to mention is the commitment to the downtown. The library is committed, and the Board are committed, to having the library remain the cultural heart of the downtown area. Fifth point I want to mention is our ongoing commitment to transparency and community input. The Board is committed to providing transparency into all actions it takes, or plans to take, in relation to the downtown redevelopment, and in all the duties we perform. We very much value and will continue to seek robust input from the community on important topics, including any potential actions we take with regard to the library's facility. And the final point is our commitment to providing the best possible resource for the citizens of New Rochelle. It is our duty as trustees to work with our director and staff to explore ways to enhance our facility and its offerings for the public, in line with our strategic plan. Now, I'm going to read the statement that we issued on the 28th of March, via our website, via a press release, et cetera. The New Rochelle Public Library Board of Trustees would like to make clear certain facts regarding the downtown redevelopment, and any opportunities said redevelopment may present for the New Rochelle Public Library located at One Library Plaza. The Board feels strongly that the library is the cultural center of New Rochelle, and a vital resource for our community. The Board is committed to the library continuing to maintain its place in the community, and to being located in the center of our city. The Board has been in a dialogue with RXR, and previously RDRXR, since late 2014, regarding potential exploration of redevelopment opportunities involving the library. The Board has entered into these discussions with the sole goal of exploring a potential opportunity to provide our patrons and the residents of our city with an enhanced, state-of-the-art, sustainable resource that will meet the needs of our community in the decades to come. The Board feels strongly that it is our responsibility to explore potential opportunities to improve and enhance the library and its services for its patrons in New Rochelle, and for the broader Westchester community. At this time, the Board has not entered into any agreement with RXR. There are no plans at present to make any changes to the library as it exists today. The Board is exploring an initial agreement with RXR, under which RXR will provide the library with funding that the Board will use to pay for consultants of the Board's choosing, to provide evaluation of the library property and the development rights associated with the property. It should be noted that the provision of funds to a not-for-profit or government-related entity by a private entity in exploration of a public-private partnership is common practice. In exchange for the funding of the valuation, the Board would agree not to speak with other developers about the library property for nine months, following the completion of the valuation. During or at the conclusion of this period of time, the Board could choose to continue discussions with RXR, or discontinue conversations with no continuing obligations beyond the agreed-upon nine-month exclusivity period. If the library and RXR were to move to a second step following the valuation, discussion would likely commence regarding a detailed needs assessment for an enhanced facility and potential redevelopment opportunities. Any next step would involve an additional agreement that would be discussed and voted on by the Board. We encourage all members of the community to attend our monthly meetings at the library. Everything described above has been discussed in our meetings. Each meeting includes an opportunity for members of the public to express views of which they would like the Board to be aware. The Board very much values the input from the members of our community. I want to thank you all again for coming out tonight, and taking such an active interest in the library. I'm going to turn the floor over to Deirdre Gray Clark, who's our Vice President of the Board of Trustees, who will now make a statement. Further to that, is my expectation that in the future, other members of the Board will make statements on this topic.
Thank you, Chuck. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Deirdre Gray Clark, and I am Vice President of the New Rochelle Library Board of Trustees. I wanted to spend just a couple of minutes this evening addressing the misunderstanding, misinformation, and in some cases, untruths about our library and its future. The last two weeks have been nothing more than disheartening, because it seems that the seeds of mistrust have been planted in the minds of many in my city, and those seeds have no basis, or foundation, with the library trustees, our past actions, or any honest and direct conversations we've had about the library. I have been asked, "Are you going out of business? Are you blindly following RXR? Are you sugarcoating what is really going on?" The answer to all of these is no. When we library trustees took this oath, we did so that we could serve the residents of New Rochelle and the community beyond. Some of the trustees moved here because of the mosaic of people knitted together in this great city, and they decided they wanted to be a part of this. Some of the trustees grew up here, in New Rochelle, and they decided to volunteer and serve on this board, so they could be part of something that gave them so much. Some of the trustees have deep roots in this city, having had parents who grew up here, and even parents who served as the president of our own library. That would be my mother, Dr. Gray. I grew up here. I got my first library card at Pintard. I was here when this very building opened, and I am a living example of the fruits of a wonderful library. All of us, we trustees, eat here, we go to the grocery store here, we send our kids to school here. Each and every one of us, regardless of when we came to New Rochelle, are as much a part of the fabric of this city as anyone else. I sit here proudly with my colleagues, each and every one of them, and know they love this city as much as I do. So, to read this narrative, that these library trustees would do something, such as give up ownership of the library, or put the library on the top two floors of a building with secondary access to anyone, well, that has been discouraging. But far worse, that narrative does nothing to further some of the discussions we should be having. I believe that my children, and all of your children and grandchildren, every child who visits this library has the right to dream of a 21st-century building and library, one that offers the best services any library has to offer, one that provides space for both new and improved tactile and digital learning opportunities, one that fosters the utilization of new technologies and future opportunities, one that continues to recognize and build upon the current library's place as a civic hub for New Rochelle. We have been told that we should not have a conversation with RXR at all, ever, that we should not entertain the idea of enhanced services, that we should not entertain the idea of better services, better lighting, better technology, more environmentally friendly space, better access for those with disabilities. We will not entertain any of that, because of the white building built over the garage in 1977. I understand, and acknowledge, and honor the real anxiety that people in New Rochelle have around the new development, and what it means for all of us. But then let's have an honest discussion about that. It is clear that we are a community that loves our library. Well then, let's have an honest discussion about that. How can we improve our services, regardless of who comes to town? We are your library board. We welcome tough questions, we welcome tough challenges, but let those tough questions and challenges be grounded in fact, and not rumors. We, as a Board, must ask ourselves, is this building, in its current iteration of that white building built over a garage, is it the best possible facility for our residents and community members? That is what we fight for, and I hope many of you will join us in that fight, and it's a fight that should be grounded in truth and facts. That's all.
We'll go ahead and get started. We have a number of items on our agenda tonight, so we've allotted an hour for public comment. I would, folks, have a maximum under our policy of four minutes per person to make comments. I would ask folks to, in the interest of trying to have as many people as possible, have an opportunity to speak, to try to be brief, and to the extent that your remarks are echoing folks that have already spoken, to the extent you're able to shorten them, that is helpful, in just terms of getting the maximum amount of opportunity for folks to speak. And with that, I'm going to go to the list. First person is Amy Teetz. And if you wouldn't mind, we're recorded, so if you wouldn't mind coming up on the stage, and Yedira has the microphone.
It's going to be busy.
Thank you.
We need to stand. I'm Amy Teetz. I am President of the Friends of the New Rochelle Public Library. We have, in the last few years, put about $300,000 or $400,000 into the library. On top of that, we raised a separate $77,000 to build the bookstore that's now resident in the library. I would just say to the Board, I understand your fiduciary responsibility very well, that you do have to explore all of these issues, in terms of what monies may come from this. The issue would be, is once that is decided, and there is some number put out, there's going to be intense pressure to do something about that, depending on the size of the money. And I would say that the people who come through the library are really concerned, not so much about losing a library, they're losing this space. This is an important space, it's a beautiful space, it's perfect for getting around, walking to, all transportation. Any other place downtown is not going to be as perfect as that. So, that is the concern that we have, that any building that may be built near here is not here. For the Friends, there's an issue of space. Currently, we have lots of space, so we can raise all that money. Any other building that would be built would probably not encompass the same amount of space that we have, and therefore, we can't work at the same level, and bring in the amount of money at the same level. So, that's what I have to say.
Greg Varian. Citizen Varian.
Good evening.
Hi, Greg.
Hi, Greg.
Hi, Greg.
Four minutes.
Starting.
Now.
Good evening.
Greg Varian, former library trustee.
I have been so fortunate. Thirty-three years ago, I began a daily commute up and down North Avenue, from my new home in Halcyon Park, to my place of employment, a law firm in the K Building. It is that commute, up and down North Avenue, starting 33 years ago, that led to my interest in land use, because I was mystified by what I saw. Why was North Avenue, New Rochelle's only north-south part, so screwed up? And how can we use our law, zoning, private restrictions, as a way to repair things, to make them better, to make them work for us, the residents? New Rochelle's downtown was so much different than empty debris-strewn lots surrounding our new library, the space turns 40 next year, the K Building, New Rochelle's tallest. Although I could see the library out my office window, and despite being a lifelong book lover, I had never stepped foot in the new library until my older daughter needed to complete a school assignment. So, one Saturday morning, off we went to the library. And after a few minutes in this space, I was entranced. Where do all these people come from? Who pays for this place? As we all know, that question caused some battles 16 years ago, resulting in the library with its own taxing district, and in control of its assets, its real estate. When I ran for library trustee 12 years ago this month, I said, "In order to maximize this public space, we have to stabilize our fiscal house without overburdening the property taxpayer." I was thinking air rights. The Friday following the last library board meeting, I tendered my resignation as a trustee effective immediately. I was fighting two battles simultaneously in my volunteer time, and realized I had to choose one, or be less than successful at both. Where could I do the most good? So, I gave up serving this public institution, this jewel at the center of our downtown, to fight a private institution fronting North Avenue, which was again threatening not just our residential neighborhoods, but the city itself. So, I understand the fear of losing what we treasure most, but we've become so cynical, so unwilling to hear, to listen to conflicting opinions, so overwhelmed with information, so much misleading information, and less willing to trust anyone or anything. Historically, land use battles pit property owners against property owner, with the rights of each balanced against the public good. So, with my other battle, the question becomes, does one private institution have more votes, more power than all the residents of New Rochelle? Here, the issue is so different, so unique. The library is that public good, and every trustee who has served on this board, her or his sole interest is to preserve and protect, to increase, to maximize the public good that is the New Rochelle Public Library. Meanwhile, I need you, I need everyone in this room. The battle we fight does not just concern my neighbors in Halcyon Park, or Beauchamp, White Oak, Mount Joy, Greater Mount Joy, Sunset Park, it affects every resident in every neighborhood in this city. It's about law, zoning, and the private restrictions built into our original residential subdivisions by our forefathers. The covenants that burden and benefit our historic neighborhoods of today, that is what makes New Rochelle so special. Thank you.
Thank you.
For giving me the honor, the opportunity, to serve you, and to serve this most wonderful public institution. These past 12 years, I have been so fortunate.
Jeff Riffkin.
I'm not here because I've heard rumors, but because I've already heard here. That there is the possibility that an assessment could take place. I'm here in the Ozzie Davis Auditorium, next door to the Ruby D Park, in our freestanding public library, in order to, with all due respect, express and record my outrage and despair with a vision of urban life that would threaten this beautiful communal place. Ruby D and Ozzie Davis, longtime New Rochelle residents, brilliant, accomplished, dignified American artists, activists committed to the civil and human rights struggles, it simply boggles this mind and depresses me, that the Board with the names of such bright lights naming these places, might even consider a quote "assessment" unquote of the property here. I would be simply, it would be simply quote "land speculation" unquote, the latter being a long-term method of enriching the few at the expense of the many. But it is not too late. The Board has a truly great opportunity to do the right thing, to not even open the door to this odious notion, no assessment, period. Why? This library and the Ruby D Park already constitute, if not yet formally and legally, the Commons of New Rochelle. What is the Commons? The word, with Latin, Middle English, and old French references and roots, refers to the communaire, or the community, but specifically to a concrete, physical place that is of the non-reigning class, as it is a place put beyond the idea of property, a place for everyone. The Commons was, historically, a pasture, set of fields, a water source, that was perpetually an antithesis of the private property, and always there as a resource for the people. For every fine and good reason, establish a Commons here, if it's not already been done. This library ought in no way to be for sale. It is too important and central a place, especially for our working and less affluent of our citizens. Finally, if you want to contribute to the effort to make New Rochelle attractive as an alternative to New York City, not only leave this wonderful place alone, but I've heard this word several times, but enhance it. 21st-century libraries are not defined by the structure, but by the content. We lost our independent bookstore years ago, thanks to the Friends of the Library. We now have something to replace it here in this building. Losing a freestanding public library to a quote "public-private venture" would be indefensible and depressing. Without a center, a true commons, a city-town is merely an ensemble of buildings and commerce, heartless. A circle is only as strong as its center. Without it, it collapses upon itself. The same is true of a municipality. No new project can give us what we already have. This is our true commons. The library, together with the Ruby D Park, are in effect already our commons. It is essential to this city, as it tries to reinvent itself. Thank you.
I do want to inform the public that the Ruby D Park is county property. County property, it's not property of the library. So, Ruby D Park is county property.
Thank you. Diana Mason.
That gentleman was a hard act to follow. However, what you said, Deirdre, were nice words, and, Charles, you said you want transparency, but we haven't heard what plans, what you've discussed with RXR. You want to dispel what you say are mistruths in the community that you've heard, but we haven't heard anything concrete from the Board of Trustees.
I just want to make clear, what we've discussed with RXR is in the statement, which I read, and we've disclosed. There's nothing further.
There was no transparency, there was just a lot of words about wanting to update the library. There was nothing concrete about the building, what would happen. I mean, there is a lot of talk, and there was a couple of years ago also, about tearing down the library and putting up a high-rise. That's really what RXR, they're a big developer, that's what they want, they want to put up buildings. And they're not going to give the library funding for upgrades, without getting something in return. They're a big developer. You know. We, the taxpayers, own the library. Remember, for those of you who don't remember, or didn't live here, the library once was under the rubric, and belonged to the city of New Rochelle, it was an item, a budget line on the budget for the city of New Rochelle, and one year, they jettisoned because they said they could no longer afford to fund the library, and it was thrown off to the taxpayers, so now we have a separate library tax. So, we have a great investment in what happens to the library. You clarified, you said the library green is county property, and it can't be sold or thrown off. So, in closing, I would say, do not sell out to RXR, this is a large developer, and they want to build another high-rise, and there are lots of things that could be done to raise money, capital improvements, just as Larchmont did, they were closed for a year, they'd met in the back for a long time, but they raised money, and they had outside how much money they raised from the community, not taxpayers, but the communities. So, yes, we need to upgrade, and we need to be in the 21st century, but not at the expense of selling out to... but not at the expense of selling out to developers.
Thank you. Lynn Green?
Well, I don't have a prepared speech, as you can imagine, but I do want to say that I'm vice president of the foundation, the New Rochelle Public Library Foundation. We're very passionate about this library. We've raised over $3 million in the almost 25 years that we've been here and we continue to raise money each and every day for the library. And let me tell you, it's not that easy. So we're the last people in the world to want to see this library, you know, be replaced. I don't think you could replace it. But I am certainly interested in seeing it enhanced. And there really is a little bit of a problem here because we've outgrown this space. There's just nowhere else. We have all these wonderful ideas and visions of what we could possibly do to create a better library and it can always be better. Believe me, when we started the foundation, we didn't even have computers. The computers, the few that we had, were sitting on the top of card catalogs, which you can't even find anymore. So over the years, we've made a lot of changes in this library. The truth is, there's no more room. And we've gone to see other libraries and surrounding communities in White Plains and in Greenwich and other places. And we covet what they have. Not that this isn't a fabulous library and it is filled with wonderful resources and wonderful people. And I get excited every time I walk through the doors and I see how the citizens of this city use this library and love this library. And all we want to do is explore what options there are because we would be very stupid not to explore options and not to know what the value of the property is. It's really our fiscal responsibility. So I salute the board for at least having an open mind. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Lisa Bertin?
Burton. I just had a question about the issue of transparency. There's committees, you have special committees, but there doesn't seem to be a committee for development so that people can feel like there is a group of people who are focused on that particular issue and that can make reports on a regular basis. And I think that might alleviate some of the confusion because a story isn't being told. The only thing that we have is what's going on with City Hall, what we see going up all over town. We see a lot of destruction and construction, but we're not hearing kind of what the plan is, except to say that you're going to start negotiations. I think it would be helpful if you have a special committee devoted to development that can make periodic reports or regular reports at these meetings, that that would help the conversation be more of a two-way and not left to our negotiations about what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Miller?
The next person?
Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I want to start by appreciating the remarkable work of this board. It's largely because of your guidance and the outstanding work of Mr. Giotino and the library staff that we have this library in the center of the city and we're all deeply grateful. I have imagined, and I think I've imagined well, that some of you might wonder sometimes why everyone seems so concerned about this current proposal from RXR and why we're all here. After all, you guys haven't done anything yet and you might well think, and I think you think, that you have no intention of ever selling the library. I think many of us are here, I believe, because like you, we love the library and like you, we want to protect it. And I believe we're here tonight because many of us think the library is at great risk right now. I realize that the current proposal from RXR is not even yet about selling the library or its grounds. It's apparently just a simple offer to give you funds to value the property in exchange for an exclusivity agreement. I think this appears simple and relatively benign, but I think it's fundamentally misleading from RXR. RXR is a huge, multi-billion dollar corporation with a significant track record of acquiring and developing properties like this. This is not a gift from them. This is a strategy. This is a strategy I would think that they have used in the past and I have no doubt that has been successful for them in the past. They're offering you this deal because they know where it leads and we know where it leads. It leads to them buying the property and demolishing this library. There's nothing generous or benign about it. This is a highly successful corporation and they're very good at what they do. This is a David and Goliath situation and we have to recognize that we're the David here. And we also have to recognize that in these situations, when Goliath makes the rules, the rules are always created so that Goliath wins. So we have to be really clear and we have to be vigilant right now. Greg, I'm using your technique. We've been told by RXR that their ultimate vision is to create a brand-new library filled with state-of-the-art technology, a wide selection of books and resources in a beautiful new building, and it sounds wonderful. But language is of great importance and I believe this language is misleading by them and it's not an accurate reflection of the situation. I think a much more accurate description of their vision is that we sell them our library, give up ownership of the building that houses it with no option of ever owning it again and move into an unnamed floor of an apartment building whose owner will likely change two or three times in the next 10 years so that it will eventually be owned by someone we don't even know and will have no connection to the original negotiation. And we will have forever given up the self-determination that comes from owning one's home and one's property. This is what's at stake and why so many of us are here tonight. We appreciate you sharing with us recently the Handbook for Library Trustees and in it, it states that a trustee is a person to whom property is legally committed in trust. I'm quoting now. A library trustee's commitment is to both the physical property and resources of the library and the services it provides. The library board has the final responsibility to see that its library provides the best possible service to its community. This is a huge responsibility and one you've carried so well for so long. With it, we ask that you now recognize the true danger that this deal represents. We ask you to reject it and to fulfill your commitment to both the physical property and resources of the library in this community. Please say no to RXR's proposed deal and do not negotiate with them. They mean this library no good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to make one point clear and, Mr. Miller, you'll maybe be shocked by this, but I agree with you that there's no scenario that we should be a renter or a tenant in someone else's building. We will always own our property. We will always own and hold title to our property. And that was reiterated, stated in our statement and in everything we said. Anthony Loeb?
I'm sorry, can I respond? My sense is that you might own property as a condo or co-op in a larger building. I think what you won't own and what we won't own is the building.
We will always own our property. Thank you. Anthony Loeb?
Good evening. My name is Anthony Laurie. I am a lifelong resident of the city of New Rochelle. I am a homeowner and I am a proud member of Local Union Number Three, the electricians union. I'm standing here because I am in favor of this project and I will tell you why. As a child in the early 70s, me and my friends and brothers would go to Pintard Library and we would, pretty much, it was a fun day there. All right? It had newspapers, which if you remember, with the old newspapers in the 60s or whatever day we wanted, they'd put it in a slide, we'd flip them and it was great. Now, over the years, we needed to upgrade the technology and that was a beautiful idea. Everybody loved it. And I'm sure people were disappointed when that was over. Okay? Now, we had moved here. Everybody loves this place and it is a beautiful place. But now it's time, as you said, to grow up the state-of-the-art. I'm sure the, I know for a fact that the trustees here are all looking out for the interest of the residents. Therefore, I am in favor of this project again and I want to say thank you and good night.
Thank you. Erica Iskowitz?
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I've been up on the stage before. I've been up on the stage before. RXR went to Trinity Church and Trinity Church said no. They just said no. No matter how much that land was worth, they just said no. I'm asking you to say no. I don't know who that gentleman was that stood here with the gray hair, but I loved what he said. This is a common space. This is common land. The Library Foundation, the Friends of the Library, I mean, I'm reading here now, they want to invest another $400,000 into this building here. I got this in the mail today. It's terrific. There's too much going on in this building here for you to give up this property. Look what RXR is doing. Look at what they did. They said they gave us all of these community input days many years ago. Where's the green space? Where are the walking spaces? They are not existing. I do not believe them. I do not believe what they say. I feel like City Hall has drunk the Kool-Aid. I'm afraid that this board is drinking the Kool-Aid. And I really want you to end this right now. Let's raise the money. Let RXR give you the money to make this 21st century library. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen Hussein?
Thank you. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Hudson Valley Justice Center. We were asked to speak here by some New Rochelle residents about the proposed initial agreement with RXR. We are a nonprofit, public-interest law firm and I have more extensive comments that I'll submit in writing to spare everyone. But I just want to say a few things tonight. The board owes the library three fundamental legal and fiduciary responsibilities, the duties of care, loyalty, and obedience. These are laid out in the New York State Not-for-Profit Corporation Law that says, quote, "Directors and officers shall discharge the duties of their respective positions in good faith and with the care an ordinarily prudent person in a like position would exercise under similar circumstances." Moreover, the board must conduct library business in an open, transparent manner under the Open Meetings Law as they're ultimately accountable to the residents of the New Rochelle community. It is also incumbent upon the board to avoid conflicts of interest and even the appearance of conflicts of interest. All of these constraints should give the board pause with respect to the anticipated agreements with RXR. I appreciate the statements that members of the board read earlier regarding independence, openness, and transparency. Still, we're left with a question. Given the board's fiduciary responsibilities, why is the library engaging in these negotiations with RXR? What value will RXR have provided to the library in exchange for the promise of exclusive dealing? The valuation of the library is for RXR's own benefit because RXR wants to buy and develop this property for its own profit and evaluation is a necessary first step. In whose interest is it to sell off one of the crown jewels of New Rochelle for private development? To the extent that the board has identified certain shortcomings with the library's current facilities or opportunities for better serving the community, are there no other ways to address these apart from becoming entangled with the profit-seeking interests of a $17 billion real estate developer? The board has promised to post the proposed agreement between the board and RXR on the library website at least seven days before any vote on it. That may be sufficient for ordinary business, but the board owes the community a heightened level of transparency for its dealings with RXR. Given the high stakes, what are the details of the proposed agreement? Who has been negotiating its terms? If a subcommittee of the board has been tasked with negotiations, are its meetings open to the public as required under the Open Meetings Law? You have the ability to stop rumors in their tracks by proactively bringing information to the public. As the board is no doubt aware, the Hudson Valley Justice Center has filed a request with the library under the Freedom of Information Law, requesting copies of the communications between the board and RXR. We've also asked for any agreements or drafts of agreements between the board and RXR. The library has informed us that they will grant or deny our request by next Friday, April 20, and we thank you for that. It is our hope that in response to our FOIL request and the outpouring of community concern about the board's proposed actions, that the board will take a proactive approach and make these communications and draft agreements with RXR available to the public on the library website. These are critical decisions that the board is contemplating and the public should have ample opportunity to review them and engage in dialogue with the board about their concerns. The board is tasked with ensuring that the library's resources are dedicated to the fulfillment of its mission. With particular respect to the physical facilities of a library, the regulations of the Education Department require a public library to, quote, "maintain a facility which meets community needs." The Handbook for Library Trustees explains that this refers to more than just square footage.
I just ask you, you're over four minutes, so if you could just wrap it up.
Thank you.
Your name?
I'll now finish.
Please.
Quote, "Location, internal arrangement, accessibility for all patrons, environmental quality, and intangibles such as ambiance all contribute to the overall adequacy of a library building." New Rochelle residents are telling you clearly that the facility of the current public library meets their needs. The frenzy of support for the online petition and the consistent presence of community members at the board meetings is an affirmation that what this board is doing right now with its current facilities is fulfilling the library's mission and a statement of deep concern that what the board is contemplating with its dealings with RXR will result in an unnecessary diminishment of this community treasure. Thank you very much.
Michael Yellen? And if I could ask, the next person after Michael Yellen will be Norel Morin. So if you could just come down.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm going to be reading a statement from Ironworkers Local 46. Let me just say a couple of sentences about Local 46. So Local 46 is a member of the Building and Construction Trades Council of Westchester and like many of the other building trades unions, has members who live here in New Rochelle. And there are union members from other building trades here as well this evening along with hundreds of others who live in New Rochelle. So the following is a message from Local 46 Business Agent for Westchester County, John Coffey. And I'm going to quote. "We are construction workers. Our jobs depend on developers investing in communities like New Rochelle. We like to build. That's what we do. We have members in New Rochelle and all around southern Westchester who would love to work to redevelop their communities. We have strong ties in New Rochelle and are strengthening them by working with the community to create career opportunities for local residents to meet the goals of the city's economic opportunity and nondiscrimination policy." So this is Michael Yellen. There's a gentleman who just walked in, finished his pre-apprenticeship and is now doing his apprenticeship with the Plumbers. Thank you very much. Back to the letter. "Our community allies have expressed their concern that the library should stay where it is, as it is, and that the library board not enter into any agreement with RXR." "We stand with the community and don't want to see the library or its property sold to RXR or any developer. As New Rochelle's master developer..." As New Rochelle's master developer, RXR and its Renaissance downtowns partner already have the exclusive rights to develop 13 publicly owned properties downtown. By our calculations, all of these, by our calculations of these, there are at least six parcels owned by the public where RXR can build projects over 200,000 square feet, and in some cases, much, much larger. We believe New Rochelle residents have already invested a lot in RXR and given the developer more than any other community that we know of. When is enough? When is enough enough? We have come to understand from Library United that the library is the heart and soul of New Rochelle, where everyone is welcome, and we support their efforts in securing this valuable public asset for generations to come. Yes, we are construction workers. We like to build. That's what we do. And we take great pride in our work, but in this case, we ask you, the trustees of this great library, to protect this valuable, irreplaceable community asset. Do not enter into any contract with RXR or any other developer. We want it to remain where it is, as it is." Thank you, John Coffey.
Thank you. And after Noral, if I could ask Carlos Mendoza, sorry. Nora. And the next person is Carlos Mendoza.
Good evening. I first want to say you seem so offended by people asking questions, and you say that there were rumors undoubting you. We appreciate your service. I serve on the Board of an organization. I think you should welcome the questions and turn and turn and say, maybe we're not communicating well enough if there's this misunderstanding. I've attended a few of these meetings, and I may remember incorrectly, but I could swear that at some point, you said that some of the points of this nine-month exclusivity, that RXR had specifically asked you to not publicize with a long-running time to the public. That in itself is very telling and warns the public that we should be watching. It's not that we doubt you. We blinked. RXR had all these public things, we blinked, our city has been turned upside down. As far as I can tell, many of these are non-union jobs. No jobs have been for New Rochelle. I don't know of one New Rochelle resident who has a good job or a career because of all this development. I also want to mention, I work at this library, I grew up in this city, I too got my first library card here. I too brought my daughter, and then we celebrated and went out afterward after her first library card. I grew up in this city, and especially with what's going on here, we love to talk about the diversity of New Rochelle. We are a very segregated city. There are two places that I believe are really integrated in this city: the New Rochelle Y and this library. And its location is crucial, crucial, to that diversity and true integration. So although you, I understand that you feel it's your responsibility, if you could get a lot of money here and buy a property nearby and build a state-of-the-art facility, that's lovely. But if it's no longer accessible, really accessible, there are kids who come here to do their homework because this is where they have Wi-Fi. This is where they have access to do their work. They don't need state-of-the-art, they need to be able to get here. And they need to feel welcome when they walk in the door.
Thank you. Carlos Mendoza? And then after Carlos Mendoza, Monique Evelard. And then after Monique is Donna Harris-West.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Carlos Mendoza. I'm a member of the Laborers International Union of North America, Local 60. I've lived in New Rochelle my entire life. I speak for just about 350 of our members who are residents of the city of New Rochelle. We are here because we, as residents, don't want the library to be taken down. Many of our friends and family have came to this library for most of our lives. We are completely against this proposal. This contractor, RXR, is known to have many violations. It's a non-union corporation, and it does not create any jobs for our, members of our I just want to mention this proposal by RXR is the result of corporate greed, and we just don't want them, we don't want you to let them buy you guys.
Donna Harris-West?
Good evening. I'm going to, my name is Donna Harris-West. I'm going to read a statement on behalf of my daughter who couldn't attend tonight. Although the memories are hazy, I can recall going to New Rochelle Library constantly as an elementary, excuse me, as an elementary school student. Browsing the aisles and picking up piles of books, Clifford, Madeline, Dr. Seuss, I Spy, The Snowy Day, The Bernstein Bears, Animorphs, and the list goes on and on. As I got older, books continued to serve as a form of escapism, exploration, opening up different worlds and people to my ever-growing curious mind. Yet, my relationship to this library changed. Excuse me. Okay. I no longer wanted to go to the library. Why should I? There were bookstores at my fingertips with coffee, and my friends really hung out here. I no longer, it no longer felt the purpose. It was only when I returned home from college to live in my childhood home, reconnecting with my family and the town I grew up in, did I recognize the importance of the library. Yes, the library is a place where you can take out books and movies at your leisure and use a computer when you don't have one. But it is also a place that forces a sense of community, a place where your socioeconomic status does not determine what you can enjoy. It is a place where the sense of familiarity and comforting and the sound of children on the ground floor is, is welcome as the silence of adult students on the top. I've been coming to the library constantly since graduating college nearly six years ago, and seeing this public space fall into private hands would be a detriment to what this library and communities and libraries everywhere stand for. It is a public space on public land that should remain that way. Privatizing an entity that is meant to serve the community at large without discrimination would defeat the purpose of public spaces. New Rochelle is changing rapidly, and to my occasional dismay, with no regard to the people that have decided to make the city their home for generations, this is one of those instances. This building itself is a landmark and unlike anything else in New Rochelle. For these reasons, I implore you to rethink your decision to move the library to a more convenient location for people who may not necessarily care about its well-being and the community at large. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Adam Deutscher? Adam passes. Peter, looks like it begins with a C.
It's hard to read.
My neighbor, 260 Store Avenue. I'm 265.
You don't know your neighbor? That's not Peter? Are you Peter?
Welcome, everybody. Charles Marabella, lifelong resident of New Rochelle, raised three daughters here, the oldest of which graduated from Iona College, and spent a lot of time at this library. The library does so much. The other day I was in here and I saw people lined up to get help with their tax returns. This, this is the kind of stuff that's not easy to get. Obviously, those people didn't want to pay accountants or couldn't afford it or whatever. My daughter, when she needed books to read to make book reports, this is where she came, and this is where she spent her time. So it's very important, and everybody that spoke today said a lot, a lot of good things. And it's all important for you folks to listen to. But when it's all said and done, you folks have a tough job, because you have got to convince the city council, the mayor, and the city manager Chuck Strong. Those are the people that are going to ultimately make the decision.
We, we, we have no, we have no, nothing to do with the city. We don't have to convince them of anything. We make our own decisions independently.
I'm glad to hear that. Are you, are you saying to me that the city council is not going to decide on this issue?
We will decide.
Wonderful, I'm glad to hear that. Because your ears seem to be wide open, and that's so important to all of us. RXR seems to be on a huge roll, and when they get away with whatever they can get away with here with the towers they're building, sell everything out for profits, or turn it over to management, they're going to roll out of here with barrels and barrels of profits. They're going to leave behind the residents of New Rochelle, they don't really, I hate to say it, care about the residents. They care about their billions of dollars in profits. That's what we have to keep them on. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the Peter Cohen.
Oh, Peter, oh, sorry, sorry.
Is that your neighbor?
Yes, this is my neighbor. This is not an imposter.
I was worried about you.
I struggle with handwriting, my apologies.
A lot written down, but I don't know. I don't know what else to say. Well, I don't know what else to say that hasn't been already said by those opposed to this terrible idea, except that I just wanted to remind everyone, number one, it's National Library Week. And Chief Copeland, the honorary chair of the National Library, encourages us all to explore our passions and our goals at public libraries. And I don't think in New Rochelle, we need to be reminded of that, but I think we do need to, to just really look inside and, and, and listen to our, to our heart and say, say no to big corporations. And, and I am, I have to say, one of the cynical, I, I do think that the mayor and Mr. Strong will express some support for, for this, these developers. They wouldn't have 13 sites already if our city wasn't interested in them. And we need to keep this library, as, as Jeff said before, the commons, the commonplace, the, the public space, the big, bright, beautiful, beloved, beleaguered book space that we share. And, thank you.
Thank you. Seth, Seth Marcusfeld? I'm sorry, Marjorie Sacks, and then Seth Marcusfeld after Marjorie.
Good evening, everybody. As an educator in conflict resolution for over 20 years, as a, as an educator in conflict resolution for over 20 years, I'm well aware of the messiness that conflict can bring to people, places, and communities, and the anxiety that that can create. Yet I also know that from that conflict can come an opportunity for the community to stand united for what we truly believe in, value, and cherish. I want to be really clear, we are not against the Board of Trustees of the library. In fact, we appreciate that you volunteer your time and energy to help make our library the wonderful place that it is. And let me take this moment to follow Patty Cohen, especially given that it's National Library Week with the theme "Libraries Lead," to also appreciate widely the library director, Mr. Tom Giaffino. And all the staff at the library. The Friends of the Library. And the New Rochelle Public Library Foundation. You are all the true heroes of this incredible institution that welcomes all people in New Rochelle and beyond. We were out here Saturday, we could not believe how many people came into this library, and many of them not from New Rochelle. But they didn't know about this possible development. They didn't know anything about it, and they were shocked. I want to thank you for your commitment to this wonderful library, and I want to say that we are here simply because we love this library, and we want it to stay where it is, as it is. And we have faith that if not now, then eventually the Board will understand that this isn't personal to you. It's not that we don't trust you as people or doubt that you care for the library. Please understand this. Our intentions are simply to do whatever we can to protect our library and the land that it's on. We don't want to take any chances. So that's why many of us are here today. And that's why over 500 people have signed the online petition, and we have a hard copy petition with hundreds of people as well, and it keeps growing every day. And I would encourage you all to look at the comments on that petition, because they are inspiring, and there are so, and I won't read them now, but I will submit this at some point, and I may read it at a future place. But we don't want to take any chances, and so many of these hundreds of people don't want you to take chance with RXR who came to you. You weren't looking to build another library somewhere else. They came to you. It's opportunistic. Don't do this. Don't take chances with our library. We are against putting the library at risk of any potential deal with RXR or any developers. And we don't want you, who represent us, to put this library, this wonderful building and the land that it's on, in jeopardy. Save our library.
Thank you. Seth Marcusfeld? Is there a Hillel? Dugaz? Hillel Dugaz? No? Okay. Hayna Just Michael?
Hi, hi. Good evening, good evening. I used to, like Greg Varian, serve on the New Rochelle Public Library Board, and like Lynn Green, I was there here at the beginning of the foundation, and like Amy Teetz, well, she's the president, but I have also volunteered at the Friends. And I want to say thank you to everyone here. I sort of feel like family when I stand, steer, stay near everyone, because I feel like I've, I have my mentor, Dr. Ruth Gray, here, and I feel like I've actually hopefully mentored some. And I actually miss the give and take and the discussion of these evenings at this party. No, no, I meant everybody, not you. But I also want to thank the Board for the continued transparency. Those of us who follow library activities know that the statements, the letters, the website, even I'll give out a shout-out to WVox on the third Tuesday of each month at noon, there is a radio show completely devoted to the library. So I want to thank you for the continued transparency, and I also want to encourage the public to continue to trust the Library Board of Trustees and this building and everything that goes on in it. I don't think there's any disagreement that we all love this place. Thank you.
Thank you. John Garrow? Chris Sellen?
Good evening. My name is Chris Sellen, and I'm president of the New Rochelle Public Library Foundation. There's, there's so much passion and eloquence. I totally enjoyed all of your comments. I'd like to say that I believe this... I'd like to say that I believe this library represents democracy with a small d. Everything you've said about people coming for taxes, for ESL classes, for help with resume writing, it all represents what this library is about. In addition to books, as Jim Swinehart on our board is always reminding me. As president of the Library Foundation, it thrills me to see that so many people love this library. And a comment to what Erica said about what's in our newsletter this month, that was really just in the mail today, there is a $400,000 improvement that we could get for this library, but it's not coming from the New Rochelle Public Library Foundation. The state of New York will grant us $300,000 if we can match it with $93,000. So the task of the foundation is to raise $93,000 by September of 2018. We have just started a campaign, and part of that will be a lobby campaign. And we hope that you folks who love this library as much as you do and want to see improvements will help us with that campaign. There will be a collection box probably out in May, we've just ordered this wonderful box, and put in your dimes, your dollars, your five tens, whatever you can afford, and help us reach this $93,000. It will truly enhance this library. And while I'm talking about enhancement, I want to tell you about a trip I went, I made to Chicago. My husband had a convention. And I went to see the Washington Library in Chicago, their main library. They have a U Media Center that's totally devoted to teens, where teens come after school and totally enjoy all the latest technology with staff to train them. And that's the kind of vision that I see for this library. We put in a digital media center with the donation of one of our, with, with the donation from one of our donors. And it is being used, but it is only a small part of what we could do. Our problem is space. So I'd like to say that I am willing to see what the valuation yields, confident that you, our elected representatives, have the best interest of the library patrons and the city solidly in your sights. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Ryan Lewis, if you'd like to use, after?
No, wait, I think.
Could we, could you go after Shane? Thanks.
Hello, everyone. Hello, board. My name is Shane Ocean Loyet. I'm a citizen of New Rochelle, I'm 32 years old. I've spent my entire 32 years in New Rochelle. Just for some perspective, I'm a consultant that works here. I also help academic pathways and diamonds in the rough room, 1460 WVOX every Thursday at 6:00 PM discussing education. I first want to start with education and tell you what amazing work you've done, and start from that perspective. When I was a child, I also relate to the Bernstein Bears experience of learning from people who read to me here. Going through school, I also did my projects here when you had the news center with an extensive catalog of newspapers. As you gained more computers and I grew older, I was working here on my college papers, I got my jobs from here, I was able to resource my business from here, working on computers that were available to me. I just want everyone to know what a value this library has. With that said, RXR will always operate in its own best interests. I understand fine print, because I'm a consultant. When you say you will always own the property, I know that that's very specific to the property. And I understand that perspective of feeling why that might be safe. If they make an investment here, if you get into a contract with them, if they become some sort of tenant, if they become a vendor or a contractor, they will, number one, respect a return on their investment, and they will have rights, as said vendor, as said tenant, to this property, regardless of how much of ownership stake you have, even if it's total. They will have their rights, and they have intentions, and they have the resources to fight when eventually your rights and theirs come into conflict. Again, I appreciate your excellent work, and you have very just and due respect given to you for excellent work that you've done here. We come from a reasonably large community, but something could be sold with malicious intent from one party through another party as an intermediary that has nothing but good intentions. We do not question your intentions. We question, rightfully so, the intentions of any developer, regardless of their name, who would enter into contract with you. If we are not skeptical, if we weren't standing here, or me as a millennial, as a 32-year-old, if we weren't standing here in skepticism of any agreement that you would have, that would undermine your work. If we didn't take the time out of this to tell you how much we appreciate you, and, not but, but and, we also need to be cautious of any developer that comes here. We need to make sure that we respect your work and give your excellent history its due respect by showing our skepticism. I want to use the analogy that was brought up by David, ironically, of David and Goliath. David was smaller than Goliath, but David was a king. David was smaller than Goliath, but David was a warrior. The way David won and survived is he did not fight Goliath on Goliath's terms. He didn't pick up the shield of law that we don't have $17 billion worth of assets to fund. He didn't pick up the sword of a contract and a vendor or tenant relationship that could eventually cut with a double edge, whoever it intends to cut. I just want to be clear that this is a perfect David and Goliath situation, because you have built an excellent castle here that has helped everybody in this community, and in our appreciation, we need to tell you that you need to be just as skeptical, and we need to see hard data and evidence that this library is not meeting its bandwidth with its space and with its computers and with its books and resources before you would rightfully end with full disclosure, get into an agreement with the developer. That would be prudent for you, and it would be prudent for us to be skeptical of any decision that any developer would make. Thank you.
Ryan Lewis?
Thank you very much. So I wanted to echo basically everybody's previous comments here. And instead of saying those things, which you've now heard, I will say I very much appreciate you all being here. I'm a new resident of New Rochelle. I've been here almost a year to the day. I guess I'm your neighbor.
Welcome.
You know, so I, I would like to speak to this idea of transparency. I think I can speak to that. I can't really speak to the history of the area, obviously. But what I can say is, you know, I've heard a bit about how, loosely anyways, how the board is interested in modernizing and increasing technology. And I would offer the comment that perhaps this should be done by example, right? So, you know, I don't know much about how you guys operate, I don't know when your elections are, I don't know how I elect you, you know, and it's hard to find that information, right? You know, you, you said that, you know, you're talking to RXR, like, there's this Freedom of Information Act that I guess has been filed. You know, why not just be forthcoming? Why not just put all of your correspondence with RXR on the internet? Why not do all of these things that involve technology by yourself? You know, you need, you know, billions of dollars or even many dollars to go on your website and post every single email that you've ever corresponded with anybody, you know, in the context of your job as a Board of Trustees member in the library. That's a free thing. Bits are basically free. If you need someone to donate space for, you know, web space or something for that, I'm happy to do it. You know, you know, I guess, like, I guess this, my, my general thought is, you know, why not just do these things to show that you're actually interested in those things, right? I mean, you know, if you say you need new computers, like, why? I mean, it seems like people are pretty happy. I don't see the evidence for any of this stuff. There's no data available. The only thing I see on your website is your bylaws. I guess I just wanted to, you know, share that, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah, Sarah Longstreet? And just while we're waiting for Sarah to come up, just so you're aware, we, on, on our website, we do have, in addition to our bylaws, the minutes of all the meetings are there. You can access the streaming versions of all the meetings. And then, the, we're a school district chartered library, library, so the, all the information on the election and the timing and the dates and all that sort of stuff is on the city school district's website, city of New Rochelle's school district. Please.
Hi, I'm Sarah. I moved to Center Avenue in 2014, but I've been aware of New Rochelle my whole life because for many years my great aunt Patricia Anderson served this library. She has no idea that, she has no idea that I am here tonight. Everything I'm about to say or views I formed independently, but as someone that my Aunt Pat and her sisters, including my grandmother, taught to view. A library card has the greatest benefit of human civilization. It heart, sorry. Had a lot, had a lot of coffee today. It heartens me to hear from Deirdre Clark that the board intends to place its priorities with the resources and accessibility it can provide to the community. In light of that, regardless of what updates and enhancements you intend to make to your facility and to your resources, I would like to, I believe that it's imperative that the physical location and public accessibility of the library remain where it is today. The walkability, public transit accessibility, to me, is what makes this place accessible. Its central location is what, is what has allowed me to get to know this community, become involved in it in a way that no other business has. I live on Center. I walk past that parking lot every single day. I know there's development planned there. I'm not saying no, saying boo to that. I live by the main drag. I see all the empty retail space there. I know how much room there is for growth and development and places. Here, I don't believe it's necessary that this land or this space become part of that. Open access, consistent access to the internet is something that libraries provide. It is vital to finding and maintaining employment in our time. Open access and free access to information is vital in our time, full stop. And I had a third point here that was coming. People bought notes, that was fancy. I'd like you to protect this space with everything you can. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I welcome this opportunity tonight to be informed. Rumor is a terrible thing. Transparency is a beautiful thing. My time in New Rochelle goes back 75 years when I first came here. So I lived with a library that was not a state-of-the-art library. And so this place is a very special place for me, because I saw my children able to use it to their benefit. I truly understand the importance of the job that you serve, because as a school board member, we used to choose who would serve on the, on the library board. And we did it with due diligence. Good people have always served on this board, and we do indeed appreciate all that you do. However, when you give little or no information to we, the taxpayers, we have reason to believe that something is up. And I go back to the time when New Rochelle was engaged heavily in talking about redevelopment. Many of us, I'm sure many of you in the audience, went to City Hall diligently and spoke at every single council meeting. And I want to congratulate you, young man, because you're right on point. You know what you're talking about, and I'm proud of you as though you were my own grandson.
Because of this library.
Many, many young people could testify to the same thing. Many of you have either relatives or family who have enjoyed the privileges here. RXD, is that, yeah, RX?
RXR.
RXR. Is exactly what he said it is. It's Goliath. We don't want, we don't want you to be subject to someone who just is here for the bucks. We want you to think it clearly, and we respect each of your opinions. However, we want some transparency, so before you make any deals, we, the taxpayer, are going to have something to say. Our children benefit. It doesn't matter whether you're rich or you're poor. This library is open to all our change. And that is why New Rochelle can brag about young people who have done every single thing that was positive in, not just in New York State, but in this great nation. And as you deliberate in terms of what you're to do, remember those children who benefit from this library, who can't afford the books that they, they can use in this place. Don't be fooled by a few million dollars. Because dollars don't always count, what happens within every community is important because every child should have the ability to get in front of an audience and know what they're talking about, such as this young man. And you should be very proud of every single student who has had any benefit from this library. And I beg you to think carefully and don't be fooled by someone who's just out for the dollars.
Thanks, everybody, for your comments. We went through the list, so we're going to move on to the regular agenda. So, first item is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. The director circulated those minutes previously. Does anybody have any additional comments to the minutes? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I made the motion to approve.
Whitney, second.
Moving on to the next item, financial reports. I assume the normal reports have been distributed. Is there anything, Director, do you think that you want to highlight?
Um, no.
Can you hear us? Yeah?
Um, the financial reports, you have, you have them in the packet. I'm happy to say that we're in a very good shape, we're exactly where we're supposed to be in terms of money spent relative to the amount of year that has lapsed. Of course, we are heading into the final quarter of our fiscal year, and we're being careful, we're frugal, because we want to continue to stay on budget.
Thank you. Thank you. Statistics, anything statistic wise you want to highlight? No, thanks. No, thank you. Dr. Gray, do we have a WLS report?
Yes, you do. First of all, I believe, um, I believe that the P, the Public Library Directors got the annual report by the Westchester Library System's annual report. And so I brought an extra copy in case you want to make copies for, it's, you know, it's a lot of reading and a lot of stats. But let me point out a couple of things to you. In terms of the delivery system, which does cost you money, and I know that you looked at it in your budget, the Westchester Library System transported 2,221, 427,000 items this last year. That's, that's impressive. The website visits were 1,466,647. So I'm gonna, I got a copy of each of this for you, and you can just take a look. If you ever want to read, you know, we, they ask us everything this state, now you know that because you do your own report, so you know how extensive it is. The second thing I want to say is it is at this board meeting, this, this month, that the Westchester Library System will settle on the E-rate policy. We thank you for your support. I suspect that it's going to go through, but I'm also going to pass out a couple of the safety and use internet update that we've done. This is just rap, and so if you've got a committee that wants to take a look at this.
Okay.
All right? That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gray. We're going to move on to the director's report.
Thank you, Chuck. Well, happy to report that my report will not be terribly long, but good news. We are working forward in regards to our grant that we had received last year from the New York State in relation to our theater HVAC project. We are about to begin work in this theater, so in the future, in the wintertime, we will not be broiling. In the summertime, we will not be freezing. So, so progress is being made. We expect the project to begin in May, and we also expect that it will be completed before the beginning of summer, before the beginning of summer programming in the first week of July. So happy to share that news with you. Yes, good news. Chris Sellen, as part of her presentation at the Public to Be Heard, mentioned our grant. We have a grant that will be arriving sometime in August or September. It was for approximately $300,000, and it will allow us to move forward in the renovation of our building, which we have been ongoing for many, many years. This project, the Gateway Project, will allow us to entirely redo our circulation area, will allow us to introduce a better surveillance system and a security desk situation. It will introduce patron-placed checkouts. Of course, you can always come to our, our desks and we will check you out, but some people are looking for a quicker experience. We'll have other features as well. It's, it's a significant grant. It's the largest grant we've received in the 12 years that I've been here, and we're excited about it, and we're thrilled that the foundation is supporting us as they always do in regards to this match. The match is $93,000, and as Chris Sellen indicated earlier, if you folks have the ability to support, whether it be in dimes, quarters, dollars, we'd appreciate it because this is a truly important project for us. It will continue to reshape the face of the library so that this building will provide the best possible customer experience. And the, the grant programs are, are not over. I'm happy to report that the New York State Legislature and, and the governor, a little bit reluctantly, has approved a budget for next year that improves state library aid, which means our library and all the other libraries in Westchester and the other public libraries throughout the state will have more money significantly. Significantly, there is quite a bit more construction money, capital money, and we are again looking at continuing our process of improving our facility. In this instance, we are looking at our second floor. We have lots of great plans. We're still working through it, and we most definitely will be applying for grants in August of this year for, for monies that will arrive sometime in early fall of 2019. So that's really good news. So we're moving forward with grants, and it's a great thing this building is being transformed, and we continue to move forward in that direction. As you know, there is an election on May 15th. It is for our budget as well as for trustee vacancies. Our budget, which was passed last month by the board, is a document that calls for a 3.91% increase. We think it's a, a budget that is reasonable and prudent, and I would urge you all to, to vote on May 15th for, I can't tell you how to vote, but I, I was, I was really skirting the line there, wasn't I? Sorry.
But to vote.
But to vote. It's been an exciting night.
Tom, is it, um, safe to say the, was it the last meeting where we discussed it in case people had questions? So the recording's online, if you missed the live sort of discussion around the budget, encouraging people? And next month is when the meeting changes, right? Like our meeting, so just so we can let them know?
It will be May 3rd, if you folks are interested. It's not the second Thursday, it's the first Thursday because by law, we have to have the meeting so many days before the election on the 15th, so please be aware. There are two meetings on that, on May 3rd. One at 7 o'clock, which is a budget hearing, which will give the public the opportunity to ask us questions, and then at 7:30, the monthly meeting will commence.
Is it, is it every month?
One time change.
One time change. Just, just every May, we have that public hearing, Dorothy, at 7 o'clock. And then the, the monthly meeting will follow at its typical 7:30 time. And there are also trustee positions that are vacant. There are four positions that are vacant. Two, two terms are full terms, five years, and two are one-year terms. The one-year terms are filling the vacancies as created by Mr. Greg Varian as well as Ms. Hannah Just Michael. So please vote. Let's see. In, in the context of communicating the, the library budget, talking about the library, answering questions, we have a tradition of appearing at neighborhood association meetings. We have, we sent letters to all of our neighborhood associations. To date, we've only received invitations from seven. If any of you are in a neighborhood association and you would like the, myself and the trustees to attend, please, please, please reach out to us. We are available. Next week, we have four neighborhood association meetings, so after that, our dance card's a little more open, and we'd welcome any opportunity to come to talk about the library, talk about the budget, have continued conversations about the, the topic regarding development. So please, if you do have some opportunity to influence a neighborhood association, please invite us. Let's see what else. I'll finish up by talking about, again, our great advocacy groups, which you heard a lot about tonight. You heard Amy Teetz, The Friends, which does a marvelous job in terms of supporting the library. Last year, over $70,000 came to us, not through big-ticket donations, it's through your support of our terrific Friends bookstore. Please consider supporting The Friends, buying books. Books are a treasure. They're expensive, and The Friends make, make their books available at a very minimal cost. Their monthly book sale will be May 3rd, 4th, and 5th. Their board meeting for library board members is May 9th. You met Chris Sellen, who is our foundation president. She and Lynn Green and the foundation board have done an amazing job raising money for us, just like The Friends have done so. The Friends have a board meetings on May 21st and June 19th. However, there are opportunities to support the foundation, not just through direct donations, but they have great programs. One of them is a cocktails and conversation program that's coming up on April 26th at 6:30 at Alvin's Restaurant. And it's, it's, it will be a conversation with two noted New Rochelle residents and authors. Amy Bass, who has written an extraordinarily well-reviewed book, One Goal, and David Friend, who has written a very popular book with an intriguing title, The Naughty Nineties. If you folks have time, it's usually a great experience, a great convivial atmosphere, and with Amy and David, you'll have great conversation and interesting things to bring home. So with that, I will close my report.
Thank you, Tom. We will move on to the, is there a personnel report?
There is, just a very, a very brief report. We had a resignation, a young man, a part-time staff member has gotten a full-time job, so I am asking for a board resolution that will accept the resignation of Alex Horvath. He was an hourly library clerk. He was a bilingual clerk. His salary was 1849 per hour. I'd ask for a motion to accept his resignation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
So, so we do have a vacancy. We are looking for another bilingual library clerk. We are posting, if you're a resident, you live in the city, you're bilingual, you're looking for interesting work, consider us.
That's not the one that we got last year?
No. No.
Thank you, Tom. Moving on to the committee reports, the Budget Committee, I don't think we have a report per se, but the budget vote is upcoming, and we'll be making our rounds, as was already stated.
Is that the flyer club?
I think that's the mailer.
That's the mailer.
Yep.
That's the mailer.
And that will be going out in, I'm sorry. The, the budget mailer will be sent out to all residents in the very near future.
Thank you. Building and Grounds Committee, I think we do have an item of business.
Yep, if I could just briefly. At a, at a previous board meeting this year, we had voted on the renovation of this room, and our, our consultant came back and reconfigured the, the project, and it was a very happy renewed project in which the cost of the project, which was over $540,000, has been altered, has been brought down. It is now $401,500. Now, when our consultant came to us, we brought our Buildings and Grounds Committee and the Capital Repair Oversight Committee to look at this. The, the Buildings and Grounds is made up of our board members. Our Capital Repair Committee is made up of residents of New Rochelle who are professionals in the field, maybe architects, building managers. And so they looked at this proposal, and it was the consensus of the committees that the library board at tonight's meeting accept this revised project, which will save us over $140,000 and will not impact the timeframe for the completion of the project.
Wonderful. So do we need a?
A motion.
A motion?
Yep.
Who's, do you want to make the motion?
So moved.
He's our personnel.
All in favor? Oh, sorry, a second?
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Just as a quick sidebar, in terms of this project, it, it will begin in about three weeks, and, and so it will take place in the library but not impacting the theater. However, we have scheduled a, a period of, of dark. The lights will go out from June 11th through July 6th so that the project can move forward, we can fix this, what seemingly has been an intractable HVAC problem. And on July 9th, Monday, when our summer program kicks into gear, the theater will be functioning and a little more comfortable for everybody.
Wonderful. Do we have a community relations report?
Just as, as Tom stated, the foundation, again, I, oh, yes, sorry. So I encourage people to go out to the foundation, 50 bucks, Alvin and Friends for Amy Bass and David Friend. I also want to put out there that I, I would encourage people from the community to also follow the library on Facebook. Definitely give it a like. There's a lot of updates that have, have happened there. It's, it's important. Also, give it a rating. You know, what do you think of, of the, of the library? Give it four stars, five stars, two stars, whatever, and, and it's, they have a quick response. So if anything that you guys can do as far as social media, please follow the library. Quick updates, if you haven't seen the, the short film Resilience, I encourage you to watch it April 26th, 6:30 PM, and April 27th at 4:00 PM. In addition to that, April 22nd, from 3:00 to 4:00 PM, will be earthly elements classical concerts for flute and guitar with an image of mu, oh, sorry, that's, that's the email. But they're having a classical concert here. I have an image of the, of the artist here. Happy to share that. Follow it on Facebook, and you can see the image of the, our artist. And in addition to that, across the board, just letting people know, for our youth in our community, especially our summer programming, so our applications are out for summer youth employment, for, through the Youth Bureau and the Guidance Center, Center for College and Careers, if you know of young people in the community, get them working, applications are out. I know the library is a place that takes students in the summer in different opportunities that they have here, getting some work experience. And also, just to share kind of an update, and, and as far as the, the library being involved with my brother's keeper, we're doing, my brother's keeper having an ambassador, taking an ambassador to work day. We're still looking for employers that want to kind of, it's in the same concept or mainframe to take your son or daughter to work a day. So we are taking about 50 young people, men and women, to give them a full-day exposure of, of employment opportunities in various careers, partnership with Montefiore, from gyms to local businesses. So I throw that out there, that the community's working together, especially for our, our young people, and the library is as well, just partnering as, as much as we can. And that's it for the report.
That's great. Thank you. The finance, oh.
Sorry, one more thing.
Oh. And congratulations, we did say that at the last meeting, for you being honored by Arts Westchester, so.
Dr. Dr. Gray was honored at the Arts Westchester event yesterday, and New Rochelle turned out for her because of her extraordinary career, and you, you gave a wonderful speech. It was to the point in.
Short.
Short, which many of the other honorees could have honored, could have honored your. But anyways, it was, it was very moving, and I congratulate you for what you've done for us and for the Westchester Library System, but for Arts Westchester, for your, your involvement in the New Rochelle schools, and just an extraordinary career, and congratulations.
Finance, treasury, and audit, I think we do have an item. Dan and I have an item. We're going to move, so we have, we met since the last meeting, we have a, what's called a bond anticipation note, which is a short-term debt financing, which is outstanding and matures, I think, in, I want to say September. Basically, this was, this note was issued as part of a previous debt authorization to finance capital projects. We've now completed the capital projects that it was issued to finance, and so we now know sort of the final expenditures, and the, the prudent guidance around these types of financings is that once you complete the project, you convert the short-term debt into a long-term bond, and so we're now at a place where we're going to do that, because you're limited how long you can do these short-term financings, and interest rates are, are likely going to rise, and so we've consulted with our advisors, and it's time to do that. So the Finance Committee would like to make a motion to, at the time of maturity, to convert the outstanding bond anticipation note to a long-term bond in line with what's authorized under the debt authorization and with, with a maturity that is consistent with the types of projects done, and this is all stipulated by laws and regulations. Can I get a second?
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
I don't have anything.
Nothing from the Personnel Committee?
Not today.
Okay. Do we have anything from the Policy Committee? I would just maybe ask that the Policy Committee examine the, the internet safety and use policy in relation to the new.
We just did this. Didn't we just do this?
We did it last year.
I mean, last, but it's, we've made. No, we didn't do it last year. Didn't we just do it a couple months ago?
The internet one?
No, I don't. Oh, that was okay. It's a computer policy.
Yeah, yeah, because we've made a couple of small changes that you should.
Okay.
Sorry to assign homework. Sorry to assign homework.
I don't have it, but I can get it later.
Here's another one. I'm sure we can get more.
Yep.
Yes.
I'll send copies out.
We can make copies. And then, do we have an update on the broadcasting?
Yeah, I do. I'm happy to say that after many conversations with the school district, we, I expect that this meeting will be available on the educational cable channel, and it's exciting. I don't have a schedule. Steve Brown, who's our contact at the high school, and I spoke as recently as four or five hours ago. Once the broadcast is available, we'll send it to him, and then he will slot it in, and it will be playing on a fairly regular basis, as are the Board of Education meetings. When we, when we get that information, we will put it on our website so that in addition to being able to access our meetings through our YouTube channel, which you can access by going to our website, you will be able to turn on your TV, and quite likely, if you hang in there long enough, you'll see our meeting.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
This is special, a real special committee?
Yes.
If, if a Girl Scout troop wanted to come to the library to earn a badge, would I do that through the Special Projects Committee?
Yes, I think you could work with Special Projects. And then--
Aren't you Special Projects?
No, not anymore.
Whitney is.
Whitney is. I wanted to, there's a request from maybe my daughter's Girl Scout troop to take a tour of the library, maybe do a mock thing, possibly around--
A mock what?
A mock meeting.
How cool.
Possibly around, like, negotiating whether we should waive the fines for children's books and just let them have a little experience and get a badge.
And--
I love their opinion on it, actually.
If Whitney comes to me, we can work something out. And the trend, just as a very quick sidebar, the trend to libraries choosing to sort of become fine-free in terms of children's material is growing. Yonkers has been doing it, White Plains has decided to not charge, and Mamaroneck, those are the two most recent. And we're watching this because we think it has implications in regards to access to use. And I know, Dr. Gray--
Right. So the girls--
The Westchester Library is must have is encouraging you to--
Right, and the girls want to have a moot argument, so maybe we'll be inspired by their thoughts?
Also their age.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Tom.
Wonderful. I think we've worked our way through the agenda.
Woo.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Oh, please.
Yeah, I'm running for board. My petitions are here, so I need, I need signatures.
Are you going to sign them?
Feel, feel you'd like to sign it, I'd love you to do that. I'm done.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.